I would like to call this inaugural meeting of the 2019 to 2022 City of Port Colborne Council to order and ask our town crier to come forward.
Oye!
Oye o!
Oye o!
My... My presence and my... I plead with patience for your hearing. Whereas... amended unusable elections require the clerk of the municipality to hold a poll for the purpose of electing city council. And whereas nominations were sought, candidates filed, and a poll was held on October 22, 2018. And whereas I am directed by the clerk of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne to publicly announce these persons that the clerk has certified as duly elected. Now, therefore, as official town crier for the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne, I hereby state that following persons are duly elected and are requested to come forward to describe to the required oath of office. Elected for Ward 1 councillors, Mark Bagu and Donna Calalev. Elected for Ward 2 councillors, Eric Beauregard and Angie Demaree. Elected for Ward 3 councillors, Gary Bruno and Frank Danch. Elected for Ward 4 councillors, Rod Bodnar and Harry Wells. Elected to the office of Mayor, William C. Steele. All persons having business before the council of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne draw nigh, take heed and be attentive. May the council-elect govern with wisdom, integrity, foresight, and truthfulness. Long live the council of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne, and God save the Queen!
Here, here.
Huzzah!
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 And huzzah!
And huzzah!
I would like to invite Anne and Phil Converset, alumnus of Port Colborne High School, to come forward and lead us in O Canada.
O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our suns command. With flowing hearts we see thee bright, the true North strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Good evening. At this point, I'd like to welcome the Honorable Justice Madalena to help confirm the oversight council.
Good evening, everyone, and it's my pleasure to be here to swear all our new council members and our new mayor.
So at this time, I will call the mayor and council-elect up, one by one, and I will swear their oath of office and formally become members of the Port Colborne City Council. And so Mayor-elect Bill Steele, please come up.
I'll ask you to read your oath of office, mayor, please.
I, William Steele, having been elected to the office of mayor in the municipality of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II.
Swear.
I so solemnly swear. Thank you very much.
Bill, can you just look this way? Shake hands?
Oh.
Thank you very much. One more time. Happy day.
At this time, I'd like to call former Mayor Malonia to present Mayor Bill Steele with the train of office.
Thank you, Mayor Malonia.
Thank you very much. Now I'd be calling Ron Bodnar, representing Ward 4.
I'd like to ask you to read your oath of office, please.
I, Ron Bodnar, having been elected to the office... Oops, that says mayor. Counselor. Say that once. In the municipality of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II.
And you so solemnly swear.
I so solemnly swear.
Stick it right there, Mr. Bodnar, please. Counselor Bodnar, congratulations.
Thank you.
And look this way. Thank you. Wonderful, thank you. Can you go easy?
And now I'd like to call up Harry Wells, representing Ward 4 as well.
I, Harry Wells, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II.
And you so solemnly swear.
I do so solemnly swear.
I will sign two copies, please, councillor Williams. Congratulations, councillor.
Now I'd like to call Frank Danch, representing Ward 3.
I, Frank Danch, have been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truthfully, truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II.
And you so solemnly swear.
I so solemnly swear.
I'll ask you to just sign two copies, please, and move.
Do I get the pen or something?
No. You can't have it. Congratulations, councillor Danch.
Now I'd like to call up Gary Bruno, representing Ward 3 as well.
Just ask you to read your oath of office, please.
I, Gary Bruno, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II.
And you so solemnly swear.
I so solemnly swear.
Councillor Bruno, I'll ask you to sign two copies, please. For your pen. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Now I'd like to call Angie Demaree, representing Ward 2, sorry.
I, Angie Demaree, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II.
And you so solemnly swear.
I do so solemnly swear.
Sign, please, two copies, councillor Demaree. Back in. Congratulations.
Now I'd like to call up Eric Beauregard, representing Ward 2.
So Beauregard, I'm going to ask you to read your oath of office here, please.
I, Eric Beauregard, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the municipal with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II.
And you do so swear.
I do so solemnly swear.
Just sign two copies, please, for the office. Thank you. Councillor? One more, looking this way, looking this way. That's good.
Now I'd like to call up Mark Bagu, representing Ward 1.
Ask you to read your oath of office, councillor, please.
I am Mark Bagu, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne, solemnly and promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II.
And you so solemnly swear.
I so solemnly swear.
Councillor Bagu, I'm just going to have you sign those two copies.
Lefty.
Lefty?
And last but not least, Donna Calalev, representing Ward 1.
I, Donna Calalev, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II.
And you so solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
So just have her sign two copies, please. There's a pen right there. That's going to have a long name, too.
At this time, I'd like to thank the Honorable Justice Madalena for helping us with this part of the meeting, and I'd like to ask Mayor Steele to begin our first council meeting.
Hey, Dad, they even gave me a remote. Oaths have all been sworn and affirmed. Council, please be seated. Staff, please come forward. Sergeant-at-Arms, have the color party rest easy.
Yes, sir. Color party, stand easy.
Ready, ready? Set to go? Good stuff. I call this first meeting of the council of the City of Port Colborne for the 2019-2022 term to order. We have one council agenda to consider this evening. I'll have a mover and a seconder for approval of the agenda. It's moved by Harry Wells, seconded by Eric Beauregard. All those in favor? Any opposed? That'll be carried. On behalf of members of council, I would like to thank the Honorable Madam Justice Madalena, Constable Nicholas Tim of the RCMP, members of the Royal Canadian Legion, Branch 56 Color Guard, our honor guard, including members of the Niagara Regional Police, Port Colborne Volunteer Fire Company, Port Colborne Professional Firefighters Association, the Navy League Cadet Corps 200 Victory, and 79 Litten Davies Squadron, Royal Canadian Air Cadets, Terry Dyson, our piper, and Dr. Tom Picard, our town crier. Special thank you to former mayor John Maloney. Thank you, John. My sister Anne and brother-in-law Phil Converset for doing O Canada, and everyone taking part in our inaugural council meeting. We look forward to serving you, the public, to the best of our abilities over the next four years. Before I call my fellow councillors to say a few words, this gavel is not the normal gavel that the mayors have used in the last number of years. This actually belonged to my great-grandfather when he was warden of Welland County, and the dates on it were 1906 to 1938. My dad gave it to me to use. He said, "Someday you'll use this." I was hoping he'd be here, but he'd be 102 today, so that's kind of a little tough sometimes. But I appreciate what my father did for me in actually keeping this gavel. It will be going back into a place of safety, and I'll go back to the original mayor's gavel, so I really appreciate this. And again, John, thank you for this. Okay, representing Ward 4... Okay, representing Ward Four's, Counselor Ron Bodden.
As I start my 18th year on the City Council, I would like to thank my family, who have been totally supportive each and every time I put my name forward for public office. My wife Claire, she's a cute one sitting beside John Maloney. I might be doing this again, I might need another. James and Glenn, no one could have been better campaigning than this. Thanks for your encouragement and being a sounding board when I needed it. To the voters of Ward Four, who have put their trust in me, I will do my very best to represent you on council. To the new mayor and councilors, I have worked with Mayor Steele, actually Bill and I got on at the same time in council, worked with Counselor Danch, Demarest, and Bruno. So they know what to expect from me. Counselors Bagu, Beauregard, Clayoff, and Wells, welcome. I like to enjoy council meetings and occasionally add some levity to the meeting. While I do not take myself seriously, I do take the job of counselor very seriously. I would expect us to disagree on a number of issues and have the occasional argument at council. In fact, I would be disappointed if this doesn't happen. So here's my pledge to you. My interaction at council will always be civil, on the issues, and never be a personal attack on anyone. I look forward to the new ideas and active participation of everyone. Let's get at it. Thank you.
And now Donna Callella, representing Ward One.
Mr. Mayor, fellow councilors, honored guests, I'm one of the new kids on the block, but I want to say thank you so much to my family, friends, and citizens of Ward One, who placed their trust in me and supported me throughout this campaign. I will try very hard not to disappoint you. To those of you who did not vote for me, my goal will be to make you wish you had. A special thanks to my husband Ted, who always believes in me, even when I don't believe in myself, and also to my unofficial campaign managers, Betty and Ed Callella. I could not have achieved this without you. So, as Ted and I did our walkabout of Ward One, I soon discovered that anyone who had talked with Ed knew more about me than I know about myself. Thank you both. In ending, I would like to say four famous words. I have a dream. It is not about challenges, difficulties, or issues, but rather, it's based on possibilities. Working together as a council for our community as a whole, the possibilities the next four years hold for us are endless. I look forward to serving the people of Port Colborne. Thank you for this opportunity.
And Counselor Frank Dance, representing Ward Three.
Welcome, everyone. Justice Madalena, thanks for my third kick at the can here. No paper in front of me, I usually fly by the seat of my pants. Thank you to Ward Three, my wife in the back. Here I go again, honey. I don't want to be home all night.
Next is Counselor Eric Beauregard, representing Ward Two.
Thank you all for taking part in this wonderful evening. I would like to give a special thanks to my family, my friends, and my girlfriend, all sitting right there in the front room. To the constituents of Ward Two, it's an honor and a privilege to be one of your elected representatives. As your representative, it is my duty to raise fearlessly every issue, advance every argument, and ask every question necessary to advance the ward. I will do just that. A better Ward Two makes for a safer and more prosperous Port Colborne. Over the next four years, I look forward to putting my two political science degrees and legal education to some use, while offering fresh thoughts and opinions to City Hall. I also look forward to work with council and staff in the pursuit of Port Colborne's best interests. Thank you.
And Counselor Gary Brunel, representing Ward Three.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to first thank my family, campaign helpers, and citizens of Ward Three, but more importantly, citizens of Port Colborne. I learned once from a wise individual who was on council that although I am the counselor for Ward Three, I am a city counselor, and I will take that into serious consideration when deliberating issues. I think we really have to look at the good of the whole city in each and every deliberation. I do promise you that I will look at every individual item with the thoroughness of time and research. The one thing I had always prided myself in my first 16 years on council was although I had leanings, I never made a decision till I got here and listened to everybody. So I want you to know that there'll be no time prior to a meeting that I will have come down firmly on it, because I think I really need to hear everyone's voice then. The first 16 years were a lot of fun, and I made some great friendships, and although there's three of us here, we're here back in '95 and the term after this, and I'd like to think we're maybe the three wise men. I think other people would say differently, and they'd probably be right. I don't think there's a patent on good ideas, or seniority in this case means very much. I would like to thank my wife and my children in particular. I've walked the walk of where you're away a lot and in meetings, and I think anybody who's up here on this dais would attest to the fact that their families give up a lot. New people will find out they'll give up a lot more than they thought, but I really truly think that this has the makings of a fantastic council with a mixture of experience and new people. At the end of the day, though, this time around, I see it having those eight years that I've been away from this chamber, felt the good fortune of having our two children married, fantastic spouses, grandfather now for the third coming up on the fourth time. So this time around, it's for you guys, the next generation.
Thank you, Gary. And Counselor Mark Bagu, representing Ward One.
Mine's very, very short. Madam Justice, thank you very much, I appreciate it. All I want to do is pretty well thank the people that gave me encouragement and advice. Bob Saraceno, former Mayor of Port Colborne, thank you very much. He gave me a lot of, before I even decided to run, I talked to him, what he thought, and he gave me some ideas, and once I decided to run, put my name in, I asked him for some hints, and he gave me some hints about what him and my father, former mayor, used to do, and one of the sequins was a golf ball. I'm not going to tell you what I did with it. Once more, if you want to know, you're going to have to run for council and ask Mayor Bob, former Mayor Bob. Thank you, Mayor Bob. Mr. Thomas Ambrose Lannan, I had to say Ambrose because I knew this since I was four years old, you and your wife Carmen, thank you for your advice and encouragement. Barbara Budris, regional council-elect, she told me that the best thing, that one of the best things about running for council was meeting the people, and she really enjoyed that so much. I'll tell you, when I went to Ward One, I met such terrific people, knowledgeable. Like, there was people way, way smarter than I was, and I don't know everything. And basically, I will ask for help from my constituents in my ward and in the city, and I think that there's so much valuable people out there that I encourage them to come up with ideas in the city council, or even come up here on the city council meeting. I really encourage that. My sister Penny, thank you very much for talking to a few doors with me and giving encouragement. And of course, my wife Diana. I still owe her a dining room ceiling. Rafter's up there, it's bigger for a while, and pretty soon, dear, I'll get up there. Maybe we'll have a work party with city council. And last of all, I promise I will not anybody down, and I am available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and I made that promise in the campaign, and I will keep it to the end.
Thank you, Mark. And now Counselor Angie Demery, representing Ward Two.
Justice Madalena, C.A.O. Louis, honored guests, members of the Color Party, Mayor Steele, fellow councilors. I am deeply honored and privileged to be here tonight to begin my third term as Port Colborne City Council for Ward Two. I'm truly humbled by the support and confidence shown to me by the voters, and I will do my very best to be deserving of that trust that they put in me every single day. To my family, thank you for being my biggest supporters. Thank you for constantly putting my happiness before your own. Thank you for giving me people to look up to. I can't ever say that enough. Thank you. To the many friends and supporters with whom I have been blessed, thank you for your part in my journey. Mr. Mayor, fellow councilors, our residents have high expectations of us. My promise to you and to them is simple and straightforward. I will work with you and with city staff in an open, positive, and engaging manner. I will make decisions in the same way any of you would, because at the end of the day, we all aspire to the same vision, a stronger, more vibrant, and united Port Colborne.
Thanks, Ange. And Counselor Harry Wells, representing Ward Four.
Honorable Madam Justice Madalena, Mayor Steele, distinguished guests, fellow councilors and staff, ladies and gentlemen. I stand here today before you with great pride and appreciation to be elected as Counselor for Ward Four. I commit to being accountable for my representation and involvement in finding, promoting, and implementing solutions to the challenges that threaten our community's economic, environmental, and social sustainability. I truly believe that together we have the power and capability to make Port Colborne a community and place of choice. My thanks and continued gratitude goes out to my wonderful wife, Donna, of four, three years, my children Shannon, Cassandra, Haley, and Eric, and their families, and the rest of my family for their love and endless support and encouragement, to all the constituents of Ward Four, those that I met as I walked the long roads during my campaign, and those I missed but will meet during my term, despite their guard dogs, guard geese, and guard hogs. Trust me, you got to watch out for those guard geese. They're nasty as well. Thank you for your support and patience as we move into the future. Thanks to the re-elected, the newly-elected councilors, mayor, and staff for welcoming me to the team at Port Colborne and providing me advice and guidance so I can be more effective in serving our city and its residents.
Every day you may make progress, every step may be fruitful, yet there will stretch out before you an ever-lengthening, ever ascending, ever improving path. You know you will never get to the end of the journey, but this, so far from discouraging, only adds to the joy and glory of the climb. Sir Winston Churchill. Madam Justice, special guests, family, friends, fellow councilors, it is with profound sense of humility that I stand here today, having earned your trust to lead this great city, and will do everything to keep that trust as we work through the next four years. I would first like to thank my wife Debbie, my sons Mitch, Mac, and Riley for sharing me with you, the citizens, not only for the next four years, but for the 17 I served as Ward One Counselor. Thank you for your time on the campaign trail. As Harry said, Ward Four is tough. Long lots, and lots of dogs, and geese, and every other animal you can describe. It was fun, though. We covered a lot of ground. Without them, the campaign doesn't move as smoothly. They kind of kept me on the straight and narrow between my wife and my three sons, believe me. To my mother Gladys, who unfortunately couldn't make it this evening, my Aunt Olive, my mother-in-law Sue Napper, I thank you for your unending support over the years and the love you have shared with everyone involved in our campaign. To the two gentlemen that have guided me throughout my political career, who still guide me from above, my father Chuck and my father-in-law Bill Napper, I know their smiles are never-ending, just as my admiration for them is. To my friends, your attendants, and those who couldn't make it or wouldn't pay the scalper's price for a seat. You know, I'm not, it's tough for me to name everybody. We had such a fantastic team. We got young kids, as I call them, not kids' kids, but they're kids to me, because I've seen them all grow up, like, my kids, they're all friends of my boys. Eli Kote, thanks, E. Almost two or three days a week, plus every Saturday for two and a half months, banging on doors, banging on some signs here and there, helping us out. That's the young side. Now we get to the older side. We went right up the gavel. Other than my mother-in-law, because I already thanked her. She was maybe the oldest, didn't it? Tommy and Carmen Lannan, and a lot of people may not have supported me, but as soon as I heard Tom Lannan was involved, I had their vote. Thanks, Tommy. Another guy, lots of door-to-door. Carmen, our office, thank you very much. Former Counselor Bee Kenny, he took me to the majority of doors in Ward Three. All I remember is, "This is your guy. This is your guy." That's all she said, "This is your guy." And you know what? They were Bee's people, now they're my people. Love the Ward Three people. Thanks, Bee. Thanks, Bee. Mayor Barton Mark, for all your help at the office, especially Marilyn. She looked after our office for us, scheduled everybody, did some day-to-day work on the phones and some canvassing for us with our real estate agents in Port Colborne. We really appreciate them. Mark was always there with advice, some emails here and there. Thank you, Mark. Heather Pete Schalzo, Heather Works Army, again, they came out in the campaign for us. Wayne and Glory Arnold, longtime Port Colborne people. Thanks, guys. Trevor Durston, now Trevor has to go to those ballet lessons every Saturday, he can't tell us that.[1377.15][1377.15](laughter) Thanks, Trevor. Trevor and I are in the same business together, so I've known him for a long time through, within the insurance industry, so we appreciate that. Our good friend Mark Robinson, did photographs and looked after our website and some social media for us. We appreciate that. Audrey Garrett, as soon as I said I was running, Audrey came to my office and said, Billy, I will go door-to-door, I'm working for you. Audrey, love you. Thank you. She's great. Good friend of Tommy's, too, and she's not a lady that knows a lot of people in Ward Rob and Leanne Bizzy, my buddy Biz, another photographer out there going door-to-door, he was out in the streets, taking photographs of us. And Leanne, Leanne was a big help in Ward Two because she grew up there. Thank you, Leanne. That was fantastic. My wife's family, Dave and Claudette, are here, thank you. Appreciate your door-to-door and helping out in the office, Claudette. And then Anna Phil for singing Old Canada, filling in at the last minute for our Port High people. And my sister Jennifer, my brother-in-law Kent, for putting up signs on our front lawn.[1455.15][1455.15](laughter) Tiffy Kennedy and Elmo Martini, they did all the front work of our signs. We really appreciate it. Former Mayor Neil Show, Neil where I, there he is right in the back. You know, there's a lot of politics in this room, so you think about it. We got Mayor Maloney, Mayor Show, Mayor Saraceno, Mark's dad, Mayor Bagu, my great-grandfather, Mayor Steele, so a lot of political history in this room. And plus, councillors have been around a long, too. Former councillors, my good friend Barb over there, thank you very much. Brian Lambie, thanks, Brian. Man of wisdom, believe me, quietly behind the scenes. Now, there's the guy that really kept me on track, that was the guy who did phone calls and emails every day. What do you think about this? What do you think about that? He's the guy that's slapping the wrist, and I can't do that, I can do this, I can do that. Appreciate that. And one of my best friends, Todd Schultz, who's doing community work tonight with the Port Colborne basketball, said his son's basketball. Thank you. Thank you for your faith in our campaign and in me, and I will not let you down. To the citizens of Port Colborne, our team assembled here this evening will do our utmost to work hard for you and deliberate the issues with thought, facts, and resolve. We will get the job done with the repair front and center on each and every issue. To all our staff, don't be afraid to think outside the box. Bring your ideas forward. The more inclusion from you is always paramount for the success of our city and this council. Remember, we are a team, so let's work together. I'd like to thank Mayor John Maloney for his service to all of us in Port Colborne, as well as his council, who gave their time to serve us over the past four years. Thank you to those not returning, and good luck in all your future endeavors. To our eight councillors on either side of me here, four years will fly by. So in the words of Sir Winston Churchill, courage is what it takes to stand up and speak. Courage is also what it takes to sit down and listen. So let's get to work. Councillors, are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, is there any further business? Seeing none. Seeing no further business, Madam Clerk, can we have a confirmatory bylaw?
It is bylaw 6632-87-18, being a bylaw to adopt, ratify, and confirm the proceedings of council of the Corporation of the City of Port Colborne at its inaugural meeting of December 3, 2018.
May I have a mover and seconder for the approval of the bylaw? We have it moved by Mark Bagu, seconded by Donna Kalela. All in favor? All opposed? Carry unanimously. Our next regular meeting of council is Monday, December 10, 2018, starting at 6:30 PM here in the council chambers. That brings us to the close of the first meeting. I would like to invite everyone to join us for refreshments immediately following this meeting in Committee Room Three at the very back, and I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to join this meeting. We have a mover, Angie Demare, and we have a seconder, Gary Brunel. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried and asked. Sergeant-at-Arms, please retire the colors.
Yes, sir. Go to party, change it.[1700.01][1700.01](bell) Go to party!
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I now call this meeting adjourned.